Yeah.
What's the middle of law will is now?
Uh. In your neighborhood, 38th happened. You guys are, but probably on the backside, some of those on Belmont, there might be some narrowers, yeah. Yeah, she just gave us the, the sign. You guys are the only two here, the rest should be online. And just so you know, TV, we're having some, you guys will all see it there, they're gonna see it at home, so. Yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
2020, roll call.
Budkey?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Coon?
Here.
Lunskey?
Here.
Maticek? Reikert? Reikert? Sandy? Wasvik?
Here.
How many was that?
We have a quorum.
Yep, quorum present. I'm reading an approval of the minutes from the August 5th, 2020 meeting. Any comments? Motions? Rubitals?
I'll move approval.
I believe, believe that was Mr. Budkey, second by, second by Mr. Lunskey. If I missed something, you guys just pointed out, I'll do the best I can. Discussion? Hearing no one, minutes are approved as submitted. Item three, public hearings petitions and approvals and minor changes, 3-1.
Public hearing fast track, replat of lots G and M of the replat of.
Mike, turn on your mic on.
Have it on.
Oh, there it is.
Sorry, okay. Public hearing fast track, replat of lots G and M of the replat of lots B, C, D, E, and F, block one, of a replat of lot one, block one, industrial subdivision number two, and lot A, block one, of the replat of lot one, block one, industrial subdivision number two, to the city of Grand Forks, North Dakota, located at 1120 South 46th Street.
You wanna reread that? No, just kidding. Come on, we had to have some fun somewhere in here. Nice job. Mr. Brooks, are you gonna speak on this one?
I think this one's gonna be Andrea, so hopefully we can hear her through Zoom.
Yeah, I, hopefully you guys can hear me, but I'm hoping our public input or info team can change the screen right now for those on the Zoom call, we can, we don't see the screen that you're sharing.
Let me know when you can see it.
I don't know if them as the hosts need to change a setting, it, it shows up as a small icon for full, I don't know if they can push it to the full view.
Hopefully Cheryl can let me know if she's able to get that, otherwise I might have you do that from, from there.
That's much better now.
Yep, okay, we can see it, so thank you, I, thank you Cheryl for doing that. So jumping into it, we're located in the industrial park, Ryan's kinda showing on the screen. The lot currently is home to North Star Insulation. There's a portion to the north of the lot that the owner is looking to split off and build a new shop on. The plat that got sent out into the packet kinda shows the outline of where the new shop's gonna be, yep, right there. The lot is interesting in that it has a significantly large utility easement on it, there's a main, water main running through the north through that easement, and so it ends up being about a 40-foot utility easement, which restricts the, the use of the lot significantly, especially if it's being split off, and so, separate through this process, the owner is going to go through the board of adjustments to seek a variance for a 10-yard side yard, a 10-foot side yard, excuse me. Normally in an industrial zone, it's 15, so we'll go through that process of allowing the 10-foot, given a significant easement, the 10-foot seems reasonable from, from staff's perspective. Other than that, the owner is, has a longstanding agreement with his neighbor to the west to use a portion of his lot, he's gonna sell off the portion that they've always used to them as part of the replat as well. And I, I could certainly answer any questions, and I do believe the owner's there with Ryan in the room if there's any questions, but could certainly answer him or, or he can.
Okay, I think we got all that Andrea, what I'll do first, you guys try to make this easy, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience like to step up and address this item, I know the owner's here, at this time, do so. Seeing nobody come up, if we need you, we'll call you back up, I guess, if anybody's got any questions, but other than that, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Anything from the commissioners?
Move approval.
Second approval.
I believe that was Mr. Budkey again, seconded by, seconded by Mr. Lunskey. Discussion?
Steve Johnson made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, thank you for correcting that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Item 3-2.
Public hearing fast track, plat of Cogar re-subdivision being a replat of lot one, block one, auditor subdivision number 22, and lot B, block one, of the replat of lot 27, block one, Boyd second addition to the city of Grand Forks, North Dakota, located at 13, 3800 13th Avenue North.
Mr. Gangler.
Good evening commissioners, the map that I have up is kind of a combination of a vicinity map, a zoning map, and to show you the, the plat configuration. So items 3-2 and 4-1 are the same property. 3-2 is a replat, so we're located on 13th Avenue North, south of Gateway, where there is a, an existing apartment building, that's been there for, for a number of years. And over time, I believe they've had issues with forcing people to park out on the street, which is pretty common with multifamily settings. In this case, these two items would replat the property to the west, which I've highlighted in blue, to plat that off and add it to the lot that is designated as R4, the actual apartment. And then the next agenda item, 4-1, is the preliminary rezoning, because right now, everything in that pinkish-red is B3 commercial, and in order to be consistent with the plat, we're gonna recommend approval of the rezoning. So since it is the two-part, 3-2 is a public hearing, and staff is recommending approval of the replat, which is a fast track.
Okay, thanks Brad, I'll throw it out, open the public hearing, anybody in the audience who'd like to step up and address item 3-2, do so at this time. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commissioners, any comments or questions, commission?
So this is gonna be made into some parking spaces for this 3800 building?
Uh, yes, they've submitted a site plan, so just to run the numbers by you, currently there's 32 total stalls on site, 12 of which are in a kind of a linear garage, all 12.
To the north there?
Stalls to the north.
Okay.
And then 20 surface stalls, what this replat and rezoning will do, will add an additional 24 surface stalls for a total of 56 stalls, which is typically opposite of what we deal with, we deal with a lot of times where people don't wanna provide all that parking, in this case, it's coming in after the fact and saying, hey, we, we really need more parking.
They might have missed it, but how many units are in this building?
I think it's a 20.
Yeah, I think it is 20, I don't have that in my report, but it's, it's not a, you know, a huge apartment complex or by any means.
I guess I'd move approval, if that's where we're at.
I'll second. That was Mr. Johnson?
No.
God.
No, it's Coon.
I'm losing it, I can't understand you guys. You all sound the same. I'll start the discussion, my only discussion, I brought it up already, is that, I just kinda wish that lot, that new lot line would have went up to the old lot line, that little piece, cuz you look at, now we're making a, not a big deal, I just am, I'm just wondering if that wouldn't have been a little smarter play.
There's a structure in the corner of that 3903, right?
There's something up there, I can't.
Yeah, I think it's just like an, uh.
But even bring it up to the corner, the corner of the existing lot. Yeah. With me?
Yeah, I guess I, I see you.
But I'm fine with it, moving forward, I just maybe comment for the record, they can look at doing that, it's just a, we're trying to make things easier and a little cleaner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was that? Could we have another vote please, I had a gerbil there, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, opposed, same sign? All right, item 3-2 carries. Four, communications and preliminary approvals, 4-1.
Ordinance to amend zoning map, rezone a portion of lot one, block one, Cogar re-subdivision from B3 general business district to R4 multiple family residence, high density district, located at 3800 13th Avenue North.
Okay, this is the zoning on the above?
That is correct, staff does recommend approval.
All right.
And this will come back one more time for final.
Right, no public hearing, so it's to us. Motion to approve. We have a motion?
I'll second it.
Please state your name.
Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, any further discussion?
Do you wanna label that same notation about trying to carry it up to the other light line if possible?
Sure, thank you. No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
And I think what Mr. Wasvik was asking for is if you could clearly state your name along with the motion.
It, it's, I'm just gonna say, if we take a second break here, it's really tough without everybody on the screen this time, to hear who is it, to be able to see, cuz people were raising their hand even, so I could see if they had something to say, so I'm really not trying to skip over any of you, it, it's tough to hear, and in this big room, it's kinda echoey, so just try to bear with us, we're doing the best we can, and Jamie's getting old. Oh, was that on me? 4-2.
Ordinance to amend zoning map, rezone lot 17 to 21, block 67, West Highway Right Away, Alexander and Ives addition from B3 general business district to R3 multiple family district, medium density district, located at 1310 and 1314th 8th Avenue North.
This is Ms. Edredson again, I believe.
It sure is, we're up on the north end, 8th Avenue North, like Jane just said, the property's currently zoned B3, and I think Ryan's gonna pull it up there eventually. Because it's in a B3, the residential use of the property is non-conforming in that zone, they're unable to make improvements to the house due to that, so requesting it to go to the adjacent R3 residential zoning, which fits with their use, it fits with what they're intending to do with the property, as far as improvements and, and all other things, so staff's recommending approval just to, to move them to the R3, and I could answer any questions.
Yeah, could, maybe Mr. Brooks could help, could you blow out that map a little bit? I just wanna see how, what's on that corridor.
Sure, here's Washington here.
Yep.
It's an interesting mix, we have actually a quite a few zoning districts kinda meeting up together between the I1, which is the light purple, the red, commercial, the light brown is our R3, and then the yellow is an R2, you've got some B1, light pink in there to the south as well, so there's a hodgepodge of stuff going there, um, yeah.
And just for clarification, where this at, is it Bremer Bank is in the alley behind, is that where we're at? Am I in the right spot?
No, Bremer's up here, I think, on 10th, or down here on 8th.
So it's a block south, yeah.
Is that an actual lot there on the side, or is that just part of their lot? Is that a separate lot?
It's separate, but they own them both.
Gotcha, okay.
I've got a question. This is Andrew, um, so, just kind of some questions on the timeline here, the circumstance, so when was this zoned B3?
That's a great question, I don't know that I know the exact date, but if you turn the zoning map back on, you can kinda see the intent was to have the, the commercial corridor at, at some point, that never did come to fruition.
Sure. Yeah, I guess my next question was, when was the house built, I guess, trying to understand one relative to the other.
Sure, the house was there prior to zoning, I.
Okay.
I think Ryan's gonna try to pull up the year for me, so I don't lie, but I would be willing, this older neighborhood, most of the houses were here, probably prior to, to zoning or shortly after.
Yeah, and I, and I recall there was a similar item some months ago, just a little further south of here with a very similar situation. So I guess last question is, what, what exactly is the accessibility improvement?
So they are looking to make some different accessibility in terms of making the house so they can age into the home, I believe there's maybe a wheelchair ramp looking to be installed, or maybe some other parameters, but any significant improvement to the property is not allowed when it's non-conforming, you can continue to do maintenance to the property, but any additions or anything like that isn't permitted when you're non-conforming.
Right, okay. And, and you and I have spoken before offline about this idea of non-conforming, I, I guess there's something about it that kind of rubs me the long, the wrong way here, so I, I absolutely think we should approve this request, it seems like a no-brainer to me, especially in this part of town, in my mind, I feel like the, basically the next level of intensity, like the next level of development should be allowed by, by right, and my suspicion here is that, uh, these people wanna make like some very minor, like modest improvements, maybe something like a, a ramp, just based on, on your description, and we have this rule in place that's not allowing them to do something as simple as that, so, I, I hope this causes a little introspection to why we have this regiment in place, and why we're interpreting it this way. But having said that, I will move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Budkey. Anyone else?
Steve, this is Pete, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Coon.
Do we have any other properties in this corridor that don't match up with their land use right now?
Ms. Edredson?
Potentially, Ryan might have a better idea, cuz he seems to retain that information better than I do these days.
There was a compliment in there, Mr. Brooks.
There was.
They're really hard to see.
I'm, I'm helping you out, when I hear one, I'm gonna make sure you get it.
For the most part, we've looked at these at a case-by-case basis when the owner has brought them forward, in theory, we would, would like to maintain the commercial corridor piece of it, but we also don't wanna negative, negatively impact somebody's private residence.
Yeah, cuz I think the property right to the north is like a painter or something?
Ye olde painter, scary.
And then, Bremer, do they own that grassy spot and?
Yeah.
Bank area, so they own that whole area?
I think you're right.
Okay.
Yep.
I was just trying to make sure that we weren't just overlooking some other, and having this problem again in the short term.
We, I, I did go to the north, so that's how I knew Gary, or, the ye olde painters was on the north side, assuming he wants to stay commercial, that, that made sense, so we kinda, I kinda went through that iteration, I wanted to make sure it connected with the R3, so when Andrea and I kinda went through that, we, we kinda went through those iterations, I know the, some of the improvements they were looking to do were, you know, there were some bathrooms and those types of things on the first floor, all made sense, this gentleman did wanna be, be 3 originally, and I didn't get his, his full backstory, but there was definitely, uh, he was doing home business at one time, so there was a desire to be B3, so he could do some of the improvements, cuz we don't let home occupations go in the, in the accessory garages in, in residential, so, is, it's a little bit more complicated than I think Mr. Budkey kinda went through, but we didn't try to go into all those iterations as to why this was where it was, and then this gentleman was just, he, he was looking to go residential now, and, and I thought it made a lot of sense with where we are, so with that, that's kinda the route that we kinda went forward with, so.
Okay, we got a motion in a second, I believe, I guess, any further discussion?
Steve Cole Johnson's got a question?
Yeah, please.
Would, with rezoning this, would they be able to sell off that east lot and have a house built right on Washington like that?
Yeah, that's possible, if it fits on that lot, that's, that's possible, that was a conversation with him, that wasn't his desire at this time, and more than likely he would need to, it, it would be a really tight squeeze for somebody to do that, and probably wasn't likely, it's not a very probably desirable lot to, to do, so, because it, it, I don't know if you'd ever get your money back to build a, even if they were giving it free, so.
Yeah, and, and if I could add, if, excuse me, if we applied all the standard building setback requirements, especially off of Washington, which is a principal arterial, you probably would have very little to work with.
Okay, we could get Mr. Bartholomew back up here in his tiny homes, fit right in. All right. Any further, good, good comments, Mr. Johnson? Uh, any other comments, otherwise we are gonna vote on this one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. 4-3.
Plat of Querry's 11th addition and ordinance dedicating Right Away located in the 5900 to 6000 block of Cherry Street.
Mr. Brooks?
Uh, thank you, so here's South Washington Street, down here at 62nd area, this has been that quarry development that's come in, we're gonna be just on the south of 58th here, and east of Luann Street, and west of Cherry, so we're gonna be right in this area here, I'll pull up the plat here for everyone. So here's 58th and Cherry Street, here's what's being called David Drive, as it comes around, it, it starts on Cherry Street and then bends to the south, and hits up with 60th Avenue, there's 53 single-family dwellings that are gonna go in along that stretch, they are smaller lots for the most part, there's some varying sizes, this was brought back for us, I think originally in June, it was a little bit smaller, and they ended up kinda pulling that request and then came in with a larger amount here, so there's 53 town, uh, single-family homes, like I said, coming in, zoning's already in place, this is preliminary approval, we do have, it's a regular tract plat, cuz we do have some right away in there, and we are recommending approval of it, and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, anything from the commission?
Are there any sidewalk easements in here?
No, there's not, just regular sidewalks, the, uh.
Way to get that going.
Yeah.
Any other further discussion?
I, I've got a couple of questions.
Yep.
Okay, uh, this is, this is Andrew again, I'm, I'm gonna ask some of the same things I asked the last time this was before us, so, what is the estimated value of these properties once they're, once they're developed?
Um, you, you're saying with the house, that, that would be on there?
Right.
I don't have that number, 2, 250 potentially, to 300?
Okay.
250 to 350, they said.
Per lot, basically, is that what you're saying?
Well, with the house on it, yep.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm asking, cuz I'm, I'm curious how that weighs against the, basically the, the cost of the, the infrastructure, specifically the ongoing and, and replacement cost of that infrastructure, I understand that there's special assessments going on the front end, do you know what the cost of replacing, say, the road or water mains, things like that are, once they reach the end of their service life?
Uh, no, I would have to get engineering up to, to discuss that, and we can have that for you at, at final, knowing, knowing where you're going, it's a little bit more difficult too, since this development has already been serviced with a lift station, when we start having those conversations, I think typically, we've, we've had those discussions probably as we jump 62nd, and in terms of bringing in a lift station, which is about in that 3 million range, and what the spread is, and then what your return value is on bringing in all that infrastructure, we have not done that north of 62nd on these, there was a discussion potentially about hiring Smart Growth America and kinda getting into that in terms of price per lot, but we have not done that in this area.
Okay, that was, that was gonna be my final question, so, Smart Growth or some other outfit that has not been contracted for an analysis like this?
Nope, we, we had looked at that, but we did not go down that, down that road as of yet in this area, like I said, the lift station's already paid for in this area, so we, we didn't go there yet in this area.
Mr. Brooks, Mr. Gangler has had his hand up.
Oh, yeah, for Mr. Budkey and your question, how you ask your question, that, that topic is going to be discussed in our land use plan update, in terms of trying to evaluate and assess future development costs and those types of things, so, pretty much what you ask is something that we're gonna be asking our consultants to, to help us provide a matrix or something to be able to gauge and measure that value of, or those costs.
This would be considered infill in, in existing infrastructure right now, right?
Yeah, well, there is new infrastructure coming in, just not all new, so.
There's some existing infrastructure, I mean, you can't have everything there ahead of time, but.
There's a lift station already serving this area.
So there's already been investment made, so it's.
Storm pond is already in for this, so they're not putting in a, a new storm pond, sanitary lift is already here, north, serving.
The wonderful thing, speaking of somebody who lives out here, is, and Mr. Coon can probably jump in on this, this was gonna be apartments a couple of years ago, lined with huge apartments.
Yep.
Now we're bringing a neighborhood.
Turn on your mics.
Now we're bringing the neighborhood in, and homes, and families, and.
Perfect.
We couldn't be more happy.
Good.
As far as the neighborhood's concerned, it was, we had fought that fight here a few times, and looks like Mr. Querry is seeing what we see too now, together. On a personal note, that was.
Noted. Good comments though, everybody.
Any of the other discussions, motions?
Remove approval?
Move by Mr. Lunskey.
Steve, this is Pete, I'll second.
Okay, second by Mr. Coon, thanks for announcing your name, it really helps. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Was that Mr. Budkey?
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I, motion passes, item 4-4.
Ordinance to annex Querry's 11th addition and adjacent areas not previously annexed.
Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, so I'll kinda quickly go through, here's our current city limit line, so everything north and I guess you can kinda. north and, I guess, you can kinda get, this area is currently annexed, you can see the platted lots. Here's that David Drive that's coming in. And as we discussed last time, we're bringing in a, a bit of a bigger area with this. Um, so, you can see where the David Drive is being platted, so obviously that needs to come in, uh, to city limits. But in addition, we're taking in some of these other areas too. We're gonna finish off this, um, this Right-Away area that's in here, or future Right-Away, um, through here. And we're actually, uh, asking for Cherry Street as well. Uh, we're trimming the line here at Sixtieth Avenue. So, we've heard, uh, many times, don't just bring in the area that's, um, just being, uh, being platted, so we're trying to bring in a bigger area, um, but at the same time, we do know that there's development costs with that. Um, and so, I think we, we actually came to an agreement. We, I understand the developers actually in agreement with this, uh, as well, so as some of the staff report talked about. They had a little bit different thoughts, or maybe stagings of this, but, um, we think Cherry Street's gonna need to come down. You know, we're almost extended down to this area now, as you're starting, um, David Av, or David Drive here. Uh, it's gonna need another, uh, outlet as well, so I think that's being provided here. We're gonna loop in probably some infrastructure with all of that, uh, reaching Cherry Street down to Sixty, uh, Second here. Um, there will be, uh, some holes that'll still remain, but I think for the most part, this is, uh, being reactive to, to some of what we've heard, um, or responsive, I should say, to some of the comments we've heard from both Planning Commission and City Council in terms of bringing in some larger areas. Um, as we start to have some of those conversations about jumping Sixty-second and the new lift stations that'll be there, as we start to hit some of those discussions, you're gonna see probably requests for, you know, probably much larger forty-acre, uh, or potentially up to eighty-acre, um, annexations with that, because the city's gonna be bringing in infrastructure, uh, for those areas, and we're, that's the type of commitment that we're gonna be looking for as we jump Sixty-second, so, um, just so you're aware of that. So, uh, this is, uh, much smaller, but, um, we're also finishing off this area too at the same time, so um, it, it is being agreed to by both city and staff, and I think it's, uh, pretty responsive to what we've heard in the past from...
They're, they're doing what we asked them to do.
Yep.
In, in a nutshell.
Yep.
And then they're taking on that tax burden right away.
Yes.
To, back to the other...
And there are costs too for special assessments and those types of things.
They'll, they'll take on all those special assessments, they'll take on all those costs.
Yep.
Okay, um, any questions, any discussions?
This comes to you just one time, just to wanna make sure that, uh, annexations just come one time.
Okay, thanks for that. Appreciate that, Mr. Brooks. Questions, comments? Motions?
Move approval, Alex Riker.
Well, thank you, Mr. Riker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lunskey. Any discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those who signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. Me, Mr. Budkey, I believe. Okay, thank you, everyone. Mr. Gangler, enlighten us. Reports from the planning department?
Yes, uh, my intentions tonight of, uh, item five-dash-one is just to get something on your radar for, uh, some pending discussions. So, what, uh, the, the topic is how to regulate and abate, uh, nuisance complaints in our extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. Um, from time to time, it has come up. We've had some success, uh, a number of years ago, but nothing has ever been changed or codified in terms of what tools does the city have to assist these townships with helping to clean up troublesome properties. Uh, one that's been recently brought to our attention, so on the map, you're looking at, uh, South Sixty-ninth Street. What I've circled in yellow is about a ten-acre parcel that, uh, is, appears to be used as maybe a contractor's yard, uh, and those types of things. I was able to take a few pictures just to give you an idea of some of the construction debris, uh, vehicles. There's some dilapidated, uh, structures that we'll see. Uh, here's another, assuming it was from some, uh, you know, project that was done that called for the removal of, of concrete. Uh, as you can tell by this picture, there, uh, it wouldn't be much of a stretch to classify this as some sort of substandard structure. Uh, and it, we don't need to, you know, to hammer on everything tonight, but what I'm currently working on with the, uh, county state's attorney is, in the past, the attorney general of North Dakota has issued opinions on how cities and counties can work together to accomplish some of these nuisance abatements, and it's typically through a joint, uh, city-county health department, as well as the city and its zoning ordinance. What's lacking in our zoning ordinance is anything specifically that's, defines what a nuisance is, and defines what process there is to abate, so one possible solution, um, and I haven't heard yet back from the, the state's attorney, but there's a way to incorporate it into our zoning regulations. If a nuisance is found to be, you know, proven, we then work closely with the county, mainly the city-county health department. And if the individual does not abate the nuisance, then just like as in city limits, if somebody's grass is completely out of control and, and they've received written notice to cut their grass, and if they just simply don't, then the city steps in, hires somebody to cut the grass, and then assesses that cost back to the property. Same, same thing with snow. Um, and those types of things, so there's a similar situation that I think we can work out in the county. And it wouldn't necessarily just apply to some of these areas that are out, out in, you know, in the open. We do have several residential subdivisions that are within the extraterritorial that I think we need to look at to see what remedies those homeowners have when they have a, a nuisance issue in their neighborhood. Uh, again, it's no different than the city. Um, it's not a clean process or easy, but nonetheless, without us changing, uh, the ordinance, we really don't have, you know, a, a lot of teeth to use, so just wanted to get it on your radar. There'll be more to come, uh, once I get with the state's attorney and meet with our city attorney. Uh, I hope to be bringing more additional information back to you. If, uh, if not in ordinance form, certainly is a discussion item to make some policy decisions before we create the ordinance, so that's really all I had to, uh, to cover on that.
Any questions or anything for Mr. Gangler on this? I think it's a wonderful idea. Yeah, where is this relationship to town again?
Uh, this particular property is located west of town on South Sixty-ninth, south of, uh, Demers Avenue is where my cursor is crossing, and then this is the city's, uh, uh, flood protection drainway, so this property is just on the west side of that. And then, as I've indicated, this dash line in this part of our, our town, our world, that's our two-mile extraterritorial, so really, we, I think we should do something that would cover most situations out in the ET, whether it's just a rural property or, uh, possibly a, a residential subdivision.
And that's what we talked, Mr. Gangler and I talked about in our pre-meeting, is that there are a lot of neighborhoods now outside in that two-mile, so we're limiting on what they can do and what they whatever, and trying to keep them conformed with our city codes and whatnot. And then you get the house that is a mess, and what to do with it. So, that, that's, I think this is a good, a good deal, I guess. Maybe Mr. Coon or Mr. Maticek too, since they represent those areas also.
Yeah, I, I spoke with Mr. Maticek, he's not able to attend tonight, and, uh, he and I kinda discussed. Uh, one of his cautionary comments was also though to really, we need, and it's, it's tough to do, but to determine what is a nuisance. You know, inoperable vehicles, unlicensed vehicles, all the way till, to, you know, horribly substandard structures.
Right.
Where's that, that line that if it goes beyond, then, then we can enforce, so that's that'll be part of that ongoing discussions of what, uh, you know, best practice is, and, and those kinds of things.
Very well done.
Other than that, staff has, uh, nothing further?
Staff rests, huh? No other business with that? Motion to adjourn, anyone?
I'll motion. Steve, Pete, I'll second.
Second? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.